Good morning. This is a meeting of the Newbury I B R board of trustees. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so as the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment at the end of the meeting if people have signed in and want to have an opportunity to comment. While this meeting, the trustees convening by Zoom as posted on the agenda. It could be found on the town's web. Okay, we'll do the poll. Here, Dick Raven.
Present.
Alex Burke.
Present.
Carrie. Carrie Luttrus. Are you here? Okay. Margaret Rhimes.
Okay, here I am. Hello.
Okay, and we have Gene McCallum.
Here.
And I'm here, Dick, for hearing. All present and accounted for. So let's see, the first item on the agenda, as usual, is approval of the minutes of our last meeting. Margaret.
Meeting was called to order at 10:00 a.m. In attendance, all of us. I wrote names, but I won't go through them. The board voted unanimously to approve the minutes from the October 16 meeting. Erin presented the Storywalk proposal. She clarified that they are planning to apply for a need grant to help fund the Storywalk. There will be 18 stations plus an extra if needed, estimated at a cost of $5,409.72, excluding the cost of either gravel or cement footings to stabilize the metal posts for the storyboards. Is that right, Erin?
Yep.
The board unanimously voted to allocate funds from state aid for the Storywalk project not to exceed $6,000. The board voted unanimously to close the NTL the Friday after Thanksgiving and to remain open on the Monday before Thanksgiving. The board voted unanimously to approve the paint color, Bear Solemn Silence, to repaint the community room walls in preparation for art shows in the near future. I was being optimistic and I added. The next meeting will be Friday, November 20 at 10:00 a.m. via Zoom. List of documents, agenda, Storywalk solutions, info sheet, holiday closings 2020.
Any comments? Okay, all those favor accepting the minutes? Please say aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous. We all accept it. Excellent, thank you, Margaret.
You're welcome.
All right, the directors' report.
Okay, we might as well start out with, where did my report go? Why don't we start out with Erin and the statistics?
Um.
I've lost everybody.
Statistics? What have you lost?
I've lost the picture.
Oh.
Okay, that's all right, I can hear you though.
Okay. Um, well, we had just a couple of little things to note about the statistics for last month, which was also a month that we had been open for appointments. And the first one was that circulation did go up fairly significantly. And I compared it to this timeframe last year just to see what the trends kind of were. And it unfortunately, it does look like our circ numbers are much better when we can let people into the building, even though it's not like we had that many people in the building because of the limitations. So that's something that I'll keep, you know, watching and documenting for this time next month to see how shutting down then affects us with our circ numbers, which we can probably all predict. But I was hoping that curbside had become, I was hoping that our circ numbers would be stable because of curbside. So that's, that's kind of what we want to find out. And it'll be something to have in our pocket if we have to talk to Town Hall about reasons to be open and have people coming in eventually again. So that was one interesting thing. And the other thing that happened statistically, and I don't know why, is that universal class jumped enormously in usage from having 207 uses in August and then to 495 in September and over 1,100 this past October. So that's really high usage and I have no idea why that is. Maybe a teacher is, is using us or like, I really don't know. So we'll have to see if that continues. So that's pretty much it on the data or any, any kind of anything that was a little different from the norm. The Storywalk shipped out yesterday, which is exciting. So I told James, gave him a heads up and I should be getting a tracking number today to get a better idea on when it will be delivered to the DPW building. And then that's about it. Oh, one more thing about the data with statistics is that our online presence, if you're, if you notice that part with social media and, and things like that, it's continuing to grow, not by leaps and bounds every month, but steadily every month. It's still, it continues to grow. So that's a good thing. That's about it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on stats? Observations? No? Eight, nine? Okay, Jean. You're on, Jean.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, okay, so I'll go over the budget sheet, which still needs a little work, as I said in my email, but I think I've streamlined it a little bit so it's not such an overwhelming bunch of stuff on the page. So in, in orange is the percentage spent. So that's really kind of what the most important thing is to look at, rather than fry your brains out of all the various numbers and balances. So it will always have the percentage. I'm getting feedback. Erin, would you mind closing your door? Who is, who is that person talking in the library? It's me. Thank you. So in orange, up at the top will always be what's percentage of the year has passed, which is 38%. And then down below will be the percentage that we have spent in the municipal budget for expenses and then below that for, for wages. The percentages will only be from municipal funds. I won't include percentages for all the other funds. So like I said, we're at 38% of the year that has passed. We've spent 48% of expenses and 35% of wages. And then down below, I thought it might be useful for everybody to get a clearer picture of what exactly our total budget is, which is 303,632. What we are using from funds for our overall budget expense, which this year, because of the MAR difficulty, the increase in the overall budget, we're taking 14,730 from funds, hope to possibly remedy that next year or this coming budget year. And then what we have to spend overall library budget with funds is 373,306.2. Then underneath that, I added in the 55,000, which is a separate fund. It's included in our budget, but we don't manage it. James, James manages it. And so that makes for our total expenses for the state going toward the MAR is 358,632, which is a far better number than we've been working with for the last 20 years. So does this make sense and does anybody have questions? Okay, I think.
And I just, thank you, Jean, for all, this is great. Yay.
Thank you. Good. Yeah, I know the other one is a little bit overwhelming and I think I may take an Excel class and, and bump up the circs for universal class because you get to a point where you can do, you know, you can do quite a bit, but then when you want to go to the next level, you realize you don't know what you're doing. So thankfully I have Erin to bail me out when I get in trouble. Okay, so budget and statistics, that's all taken care of. For facilities, the parking lots are doing what they do every year. They're going on when they feel like it and going off when they feel like it. Last year, James somehow nudged something that I have to try and recreate. I tried last night, I'm hoping I did, and I will, we'll see what happens tonight. So that's, you know, I got it all set up for election night because obviously there was still a lot of people coming here, but it's just been going on and off, doing its own thing. So I'll keep, keep working on that. I canceled the extra disinfecting that Fred Davis was doing daily because the public is no longer in the building. We are still waiting for the DPW to power wash the outside of the building. So they've got a lot of their vehicles here today, but no power washing has happened. They must be, must be bogged down with other stuff. So that's it, I think, for facilities. Programs for adults, I spoke with the new COA director Cindy Carrier, who's lovely, and she is very interested in collaborating on programs for seniors and not just seniors. She, she really expressed an interest in doing programs for seniors, children, you know, to help with transitions, things on, you know, ways that, that people, that adult children can help their seniors. She's, she doesn't, she definitely has, seems to have a different model in mind for how she's going to manage the COA, which was very refreshing. And she has, I think it's some CARES grant money. So she's going to investigate funding two more yoga sessions each month. So that means we can go back to offering it weekly between the two of us, which will be great as long as Chris Howe is available, which I think she is. Everybody's available. Nobody's going anywhere.
True.
So I think that's it for yoga. Ken Torino from Historic New England is doing a Zoom talk on the evolution of Christmas on December 10th at 6:00 p.m. There's been quite a few signups already, so that's encouraging. And he asked for local, any kind of local rituals or anything that might, you know, that revolve around Christmas that he might incorporate into his talk. And Alex suggested the annual burning of the Christmas tree, the bonfire that they've been doing for, I guess, about the last 10 years, I would say. So he was excited about that and he's going to find out more about that and include that in his, in his talk. So that'll be nice. And anything else that he manages to find. We are all very disappointed that we're not having any live owls in the building. Erin and Katie wanted to see if their legs were really the, I don't know, I don't know what it was that Erin was trying to figure out, but we're really disappointed. It was going to be so nice to have not only owls in the building, but people and kids in the building. But we have booked him for a virtual event where he'll show two of his films. They're pretty well done films from what I can see. I haven't seen them yet, but I think they're, they're fairly professionally done. And so he's going to show each one. The technology on this is confusing Erin and I to note. And but it's, he's basically showing one film, then having a Zoom Q and A after, and then another film, and then having a separate Q and A for that one. So we're still working out the technical aspects, but it should be pretty good. They did it in Ipswich last weekend and it seemed to work pretty well. Okay. So that, yeah, that's on December 9th at 4:00 because we're hoping to catch the after school crowd. We're worried that on a Saturday in December, people will be doing whatever they're going to be doing regarding Christmas and the holidays this year. And the really exciting news is Katie has made a connection with a youth librarian in Newbury, England, where Dick has been, and they are planning an international storytime. They're going to meet on Zoom next week and plan this all out. So that should be really fun. Staff, everyone was surprised at the directive to roll back. I haven't seen too many other libraries do it, maybe one or two, but all the directors are talking, or they're all preparing for not only rolling back to curbside, but possibly rolling back to remote work. So we'll, we'll see where it all goes, but that's, that seems to be the, what's on everybody's minds these days. And it is, you know, we all felt safe, but it definitely, we feel safer now. So that's a positive thing. Katie McGann has fit right in with the staff. She's, she's wonderful. She's very conscientious, takes a lot of initiative. And yes, KT is working hard to convince her to change careers and stick with library. Right now, for volunteers and friends, the friends continue to meet monthly. Two weeks ago, we met on Tammy's deck with heat lamps. At that meeting, we did discuss moving the book sale room to the community room, but they were not so keen on the idea. So that was all being thought about and then, of course, we rolled back and some point. Many of the friends are busy with kids in school and other volunteering, so Erin and I are hoping to be able to light a fire under them after the holidays. What, Erin? Yes?
Did it happen?
Absolutely.
Just breaking. So we.
Oh, yes, that's right. That's right.
They are going to do, I found out about this Festival of Trees fundraiser that another library was doing and shared it with Tammy, the president of our Friends group. And she just was able to run it by everybody and let me know this morning that it's a go. And we're going to do the same fundraiser here, starting probably next week, where basically people donate $25 to get a green evergreen with their, you know, family's name on it or something posted in all of our front windows to help the library grow. And it's pretty, you know, simple idea, but we're hoping that maybe throughout the holidays, people might do that. They'll get a free membership to the Friends as well. So I think it's going to be a good one. I'm excited. I didn't think it was going to happen, but I just found out this morning that they're going to do it. So that's great.
Yeah. And Erin, did you want to talk more about the sign they're making? I don't know what the latest is on that.
There's not, so Tammy is working with, oh gosh, a sign maker in the industrial park somewhere to do a little sign that'll go on the corner of our building. If you're facing the building from the parking lot, it'd be on the left corner where the Storywalk is supposed to begin and it'll say Storywalk with an arrow pointing in that direction. So she hasn't got too, too far because the woman she was talking with wasn't really getting the concept, but they, she broke through and she got the concept as of a couple of days ago and she's going to come up with something to send to me. So it'll come. It'll happen.
Good. All right, so that's covered. And the last item on the report is the holiday volunteer appreciation luncheon, which we always look forward to every year. It's obviously not going to happen, so we thought we would send cards signed by the staff with a gift card in each one. I'll have to divide up the budget and send a gift card to someplace. And, you know, we don't want our volunteers to forget how much we appreciate them. And I think that's it for the budget, for the directors' report.
Next thing on the agenda is the action plan.
Can I, I have a question about the directors' report.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Dick.
Or kind of. Jean and Erin, I don't know, does the library get the New York Times every day?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The New York Times at the library?
No, we've suspended it for now.
So, but you can look online, there's a big article, I think it's in today's print paper, but I saw it online about the evidence that services are not the threat on COVID at all. You know, we're doing a lot of effort about decontamination unnecessarily. I'm not suggesting we change policies. I'm telling you only because it's something you and your fellow staff members can read to allay some of your anxieties about getting transmitted to the virus. Look at the article, it's a quite lengthy one and with a lot of detail in it, but.
I've read it.
It also says be very, be very frightened of aerosol droplets. So, right.
Yeah. Yeah, I've, I've heard about the article, I haven't read it.
So I'd be curious to see if this, if it's based on a lot of this scientific data, it starts to percolate through the systems that are informing you about how to do this sort of thing, right?
Right.
If our policies change, not just because of the expense, because of the stress involved. Thinking.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that. The surface thing has been so frustrating because it's just, it just keeps changing.
No. So just take a look at the article. You'll fill that.
We will do that. Thank you. So just to remind people what this action plan is about, it's, it's required that a library, if, well, the MBLC really likes to have them on file, but it is also a requirement to file an annual action plan based on your long range plan if you want to apply for any LSTA funds, which is through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. So, you know, at first, I, the first year I think I was director, I, you know, I just thought, oh my God, I've got to gather everybody and we've got to put together this plan. And then I quickly realized that it's, especially this year, it's, it's really, they just want to see that you're, you put your, your mind on, on the goals that you set in your long range plan and that you have some objectives and actions that you're going to work on. And this is, of course, for FY '22, which begins in July of 2021, which always gets a little confusing. So I've, I've just kind of put, put down my thoughts about what I think would be, you know, a good way to go and definitely ask for your input. Unfortunately, it's due December 1st, but it's, it's really supposed to be pretty basic and it's not. It can be for some libraries, you know, I'm sure maybe some of the bigger libraries work on it for a couple of weeks, but everybody that I spoke to, especially the smaller library directors, was like, yeah, you know, crank that out in a day and it'll be filed. And then if, if we decide we're going to go for any grants, it'll be on file. And keep in mind too, that our long range plan is about to come to the end. It's about, it's not expiring, but it's about to come to the end. So FY '22 is when we're going to need to begin outreach to form another committee to put together another five-year long range plan. So, and I incorporated that into the first actions that I put on here because it seemed to, it seemed like a perfect time. I think it is a good time because it will also be hopefully when we're beginning to come out of COVID and get back to some sort of normalcy, which most of what I've been hearing lately, you know, could be next summer, definitely would be next fall. So in that way, the timing was kind of good for us. So do you want me to read it out or have you all read it and have questions? How, how would you like to proceed?
Everybody think. Want to read it in more detail? If you have any questions, please ask them. If you have any comments, you know, if we don't get to your point today, you can submit that to Jean before the first so that it can be modified. Given, you know, plans, it's simple enough and straightforward enough to me anyway. And so as you've given thought to it and that it's focused on specific activities, I think that's probably what they're looking for.
One thing I'll point out too, is I have each year's action plan for the last, I guess, three years, and we really have accomplished some of them. So that's kind of neat.
That's nice when a plan comes together.
Not all of them, but you know, quite a few of them. So maybe I'll do a little summary of that and send that off to you just so we can have some, some good news and some good motivation.
And I think often times with the, you know, with the long range plans and strategic plans and all of those things, and when they're put together, it's reflective of what's happening at a specific time. And over the course of a four or five year period, things change. Therefore, your approach to how you implement that plan changes.
Yeah. Especially this year.
Yeah, no, absolutely. This is kind of unpredictable. Very unpredictable.
Yeah. And it's again, you know, maybe when we start our new long range plan, we'll have a better sense of what the new normal is, is going to look like, or at least we'll be closer than we are now.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody have any comments on the action plan or how you would like to proceed? All right. Sounds, silence is an endorsement, I believe. So continue to do what you're doing, Jean, and keep us posted with the, if there's any iterations and changes to this before it's submitted.
Okay.
Margaret has a.
Do we need to vote on it?
I'm not certain. I, I've never read anywhere that you need to vote on it, but.
Okay.
If you, you know, maybe it makes sense to approve it, just so that we can say it's trustee approved. That probably makes sense.
Yeah. All right, and if, you know, if everybody's comfortable with the document that you've received, is there a motion to, you know, accept it as, as presented and submit to, it goes to what, the MBLC?
Yes.
Okay. Submit it to the MBLC by December 1st. I move. Okay, Dick Raven, move. Do we have a second? Carrie has seconded it, okay. Any comments? No comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm unanimous. Okay. Very good. All right. Old business. The Storywalk. All right, what's the status? I know it's shipped, so what are the plans going forward, given a new, a new normal?
Good question. Really, I'm just waiting for the tracking information so I can coordinate with James, the delivery component. And then from there, he and I will kind of go over the placement of everything and, and how it's going to be installed and, and when. I do have kind of a general, this is basically what it's going to look like, if everybody can see that. And figured out a way to make it, I guess, somewhat multimedia. We're going to have a QR code. I don't know if I already mentioned this, but when you start the Storywalk, if you use your smartphone to go to the QR code, it will play the music, the instrumental music from the snowman while you do your Storywalk. So that could be fun. You know, we'll see what happens with that. Yeah, so.
If you know what a QR code is.
Well, a lot of people were introduced to it because of COVID, actually.
Yes.
At restaurant menus and things like that. So hopefully. Um, at restaurant menus and things like that. So hopefully, um,
I'm sure people
Yeah, more people will actually know what it is than maybe pre-COVID.
Yeah.
And, um,
They had, they had it at the, uh, sculpture show at Maudsley?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
They did. That's right.
So you could get a, the artist statement and everything about the piece you were listening to.
Wow.
Great.
That's, that is great. Wow.
So, and I will have another QR code, you know, at the end on the last station for our, whatever our raffle item or items will be, we'll definitely be giving away a copy of the book to the lucky person who's comes through. Um, so that has, I need to develop that, but, um, kind of really want to see it solidify and start getting installed before I take too many other steps.
So what in terms of the QR code, it might be good to do a little mini availability in-service about it. The people could go to our website and learn it.
And learn.
Oh, how to use it?
Oh, how to use it. Yeah. I have a little, um, so it, it kind of explains it. I'm going to have an explanation on here.
Oh, okay.
Which tells you what to do. So, um, although we did kind of test it with a couple of our staff.
Well, when they can't, they, that's fine. They can come and I'll get off.
Found out that the iPhones kind of worked seamlessly. Some of the Androids did and some of the Androids didn't. So that has yet to be fully figured out.
Okay.
Um, well, anyway.
I, I will say that we're very fortunate to have a graphic designer in charge of this whole thing. We really are. I don't know what another library would do that had to, you know, come up with the artwork. I, I don't know if they'd hire somebody. I, I don't know how that would work, but.
It's fun. It makes, it's fun for me.
And it will make it, it'll make it special and superior. And I think it will get more noticed than just because a lot of libraries are just sort of throwing up temporary story hours now and, you know, changing them up a lot. And I think, where I think this is going to be kind of a, a different model and hopefully will, you know, will be like, looked at like the Rolls Royce of story walks.
A little elevated. Yeah.
We're gonna it, oh, I, I, we're gonna, you know, the newspaper will know. So, you know, if we'd had the event, that would have been fun. We would have had the newspaper out here, but
Right.
we'll try and get them out here anyway.
All right. So you're going to plan to do something with the paper and to publicize this and what people know that it's happening. So. Yeah.
Yep.
Right. And thanks to Dick Raven's help on wording, um, which will probably, once we get a little closer and see it getting installed, we can, um, wrap up what's going to go in the paper and stuff.
Yeah. We, you know, once we get the details a little more locked down, we know exactly what we're doing and when we're doing it.
Okay.
Um, if you want to get your owl fever started early, you can check out the, the images of the baby owl at the store.
Oh, that
Oh, that's
in New York. It's just amazing.
Yeah.
And he, that tree came from Oneonta, which is right near where I grew up, where my brother went to school. And it's the second time a tree for Rockefeller Center has come from Oneonta. And so we were all excited about that. And the owl was the most adorable little thing.
Beautiful little bird.
Yeah.
Maybe we can include some of that in our publicity. I don't, I don't know where he is now. I guess he's being taken care of.
Yeah, he's, he's some kind of an animal shelter.
Yeah.
Good.
Oh, great job, Erin.
Yeah.
Excellent. No, it's, it's, it's very good. Thank you.
We'll see. But I'm already working on other ways to spend more money. So.
That's okay. If we don't spend it, they're going to take it away from us anyway. So.
You know, Erin, as, as the days get shorter and the darkness increases, it's nice to have this little beacon of light, you know?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And considering that
This thing happening instead of, we can't do this and we can't do that.
Right. Exactly.
Right. Right. And considering that we had to close, you know, the indoors to the public, I'm glad all the more that we'll be able to still kind of pull them here way or the other.
Yep.
Very good. All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the community room painting.
So I met with Catherine Dela, she came by last week. And, uh, we went through the room and we, you know, we have a good handle on what needs to be done in there. And she was very relieved when I told her, whatever schedule works for you. We're obviously not in a big rush for this.
Right.
And so she, it, she may wait till after the holidays, but she's, she's looking at that and she may have her son who's, who just moved back home to help her with it. So knowing Catherine, that'll, it'll be a very efficiently, well, you know, a very efficient project.
Right.
So like I said, she, you know, whatever works for her, works for us. There's nothing going on in there. No more elections. There'll just be yoga once a week, but, you know, she can definitely work around her. So.
Now, speaking of that, Jean, the election's over and Alex and I had moved the chairs. Are they okay where they're at now in the small, uh, the meeting room off of the children's area? Or do they need to be moved?
I, we, I was kind of hoping you might come back and move them back, or at least some of them because, yeah, it's, it's cold in there unfortunately because there's no heat. But it would be nice to have a little bit more breathing room in, in that little room.
Okay. All right. Alex, maybe we can coordinate something, uh, sorry, the next week is Thanksgiving, so that's not going to happen.
Yeah, no rush.
I'll take a look, I'll take a look at the calendar.
Going anywhere, anywhere for Thanksgiving.
True. You're, you're, you're right. Yeah. So, yeah, we'd be in the neighborhood anyway. So.
Yeah, the place is closed. So what the hell?
Close, right.
Thursday's good. Friday's good.
Yeah. Okay.
Thursday's Thanksgiving, just to remind you.
Yeah. And, and, and the plan is, uh, to, uh, you're going to open on Monday?
Oh, not to the public, but yes, for curbside.
I mean, for curbside. Yeah. I mean, that, that's the plan. All right. All right. So is that being, has that been publicized? I haven't looked at the websites.
Yes, it has. And I, I'm not sure that I let you all know that we've, we're staying open until seven on Tuesdays since we got rolled back because we just, we really want to be available for folks at work.
Okay.
So we'll see how that goes. And we're, we're, we were able to manage it with a rotating, um, schedule so that everybody doesn't have to stay till seven every week. So.
All right. Uh, next on the agenda is a date for the next meeting.
Yes. And so I was asked, and it's perfectly fine if we need to stick with Fridays, but Friday's a little rocky on our end because, uh, Jane does her home deliveries. And if we get short-staffed, it gets tricky. But I know, Margaret, this worked best for you. So if there's any availability to do another day, that would be great. If not, you know, we'll stick with this.
I can do another day. I just can't do the mornings.
Okay. Okay.
So if we want to do an evening Zoom, I'm all in. Any day, really. But it's just, it's the morning time that I'm not available on the other days.
So by evening, what, what are we talking?
Um, five o'clock would probably be the earliest. If that works for anybody.
The meeting in the building in the evening.
What's that?
Thirty or five.
Yeah.
Uh, well.
Yeah. Yeah.
It would probably need to be, well, Tuesday night wouldn't be, yeah. Um, why don't we, if everybody's okay, why don't we stick with Friday mornings for now and revisit? Yeah. Yeah. It, you know, it's doable. So it, it just was, I, I think mornings are great anyway. And because we're working till five most days, that, that does make it tricky. We'd have to go, go home and do the meetings. So.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we stick with, stick with Fridays?
Erin, did you have a thought?
Yeah. Would a nine AM start help? Um, or would, Margaret, would you be able to do a nine AM start? Because if, if you're not open for curbside until 10, that might, we wouldn't, we'd free up by the time the meeting was over to be able to help out there.
Sure.
Okay. Good, good, good idea. All right.
Right on.
Sounds good.
Okay, good.
All right. Uh, how about a date? Do we want to meet, uh?
I'm assuming that the, uh, budget request process will get started in December. So probably the later the better, although I, I don't want to get too close to the holiday, but.
Well, the 18th would be the week before the holiday. So.
Would that work for people?
Tentatively say December 18th at nine AM.
Okay.
Yep. That's fine.
Right.
Okay.
Good.
Why don't we do that?
Oops. In terms of signing, um, it's unclear if I'm going to be away the week after Thanksgiving. Um, we were supposed to be stripping wallpaper in New York State, but it's not clear that we can go to New York State. So.
Well, currently the CDC is saying no travel except important travel. So I don't know. You know, that's, that's what they're suggesting anyway. So.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'll be around. So that's, yeah. So that's not a problem.
Going anywhere.
Yeah. So.
Upstate New York, Auburn. And we, where we have the little house, so we wouldn't go anywhere.
So is that a state law, Terry, that they're requiring?
Very confusing. We keep finding different information on announcements. Um, some say a three-day quarantine when you go from New York State into Mass again. Some say you have to have paperwork filled out. And so it's not clear to me.
Yeah.
I, because I'm concerned, it's not an emergency to scrape the wallpaper, but for my husband, it's more
Yeah.
Well, you, you know how to have, you're fine. I can't stop you from doing that.
Anything else that anybody wanted to bring up?
I just want to
Margaret.
I just want to say that I apologize because I keep leaving the screen. There is a washer and dryer that's being delivered to my home, which is, you know, an ancient home and it's not fitting. So.
Oh, no.
I have been without a washer and dryer for like six weeks now. So in any event, that's what's going on in, in my household. I just wanted to explain my frequent absence.
That's, that's the fun of Zoom meetings.
Yeah. Won't we all miss this invasion into our privacy when it's all over?
Yeah. Oh, my God.
That's awful.
Well, good luck with that, Margaret.
Yes.
It's awful, Margaret.
God.
Good luck.
Uh, well, I, everybody have a, a very happy Thanksgiving, you know, with, however you're going to celebrate it, be safe.
Happy but lonely, Dick.
Yeah, happy but lonely. Yeah, exactly. Different, different. You know, as, as we approach this whole holiday season. You know, the, uh, whole, uh, the whole Italian get-together on Christmas Eve looks like it's not going to happen this year. So, oh, well.
I think there are going to be a lot of 18, 20 pound turkeys on deep
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was on the, on the news. I heard it someplace last night that there's, you know, the 10, 12, 14 pounders are not to be found.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, oh, well.
Only in America.
I live with, I live with a vegetarian, so we're going to have everything that you have for Thanksgiving and then hard boiled eggs or something for protein. It's easier to cook.
Oh, God. All right, yeah. I'll enjoy it, Dick.
I will. All, all the other stuff is, 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 is the best stuff for sure.
Yeah. True.
All right.
Thanks, everybody. And, and two of you there in the library, all this great work. Really appreciate it.
You're doing, yeah.
And when, when you're ready for PR blast, let me know.
Yeah. And, uh, I'll be by next week to sign Jean happy birthday on Thursday next week.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Okay.
Almost.
So I'll be by Erin on Wednesday to sign. Whatever needs to be signed. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye.
Bye bye.